Meeting to our today in the absence of our mayor, Mayor Thornton is out today. I will be your mayor pro temp act on his behalf tonight. We're going to ask that Reverend Jimmy Pruitt will come from Grace Baptist Church. If he's not here, we're going to ask our councilman Jim Arrington if he will lead us in prayer and after which we will do our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
All right, let's break. Lord, we come to you this evening, God, just thanking you for the people that are here tonight. Lord, we thank you for the people that have a voice in our town. God, we thank you for these men and women that are behind the scenes doing all the work. God, we just thank you for allowing us to afford to live tonight. And Lord, we just want to thank you for what you've done in LaGrange and, Lord, what you're going to do. And God, we just pray for the blessings on this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I'm the lady of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we come tonight, we want to welcome everyone here to the council meeting tonight. And I always say that it's good to see people here at the council meeting. It means that you really care about your community and you want to see the very best for your community. As we come, now we are going to ask the approval of our last minute's office 23rd.
What's your approval, sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, Karen. We have now no recognition. Public hearing to receive comments on abort and plannings and rezoning and zoning, I'm sorry, appeal recommendation to rezone property located on Moody Bridge Road, which is the Newman property, with three different zoning designation, suburban, single-family residential to traditional neighborhood residential, suburban, single-family residential to traditional neighborhood medium-density residential, suburban, single-family residential to traditional neighborhood mixed use. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on that tonight? I understand that Mr. Coleman Cody has a couple of people.
Good evening, sir.
Yes, sir. Please have the mic and introduce yourself.
Dr. Edmondson and the city council. Wisteria Ridge subdivision, we have 57 homes, and I'd like to invite three people who are going to speak, myself and two others, and we will not take more than 10 minutes total time. If that's okay.
Yes, thank you so much.
Do me a favor, pull that microphone down to your just heart. Thank you. Yeah, that's, yeah.
I am short, Mr. Gans.
Tap it, y'all here now. Tap it.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Did the council hear me now?
Yes.
Good. I'll proceed. I have two people. Bill Scarborough would like to make the first presentation to the board and Jim or J.M. Rollinson would like to make the second, and then I'll wrap it up and we will not take more than 10 minutes, I assure you. Bill, you are up.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Bill Scarborough and my wife and I are 12-year residents of Wisteria Ridge Terrace, and I'm here today to address some of the concerns of our residents as it relates to the property development of the former Newman property. I want to state upfront that this is in no way an attempt to protest this development. We all realize its need as it relates to the future growth of our city. Our purpose today is to bring attention to various concerns we as residents have with certain aspects of the proposed development and hopefully seek a remedy prior to the final approval. Because once final approval is made, then the developer then has no incentive to successfully address our concerns. I want to focus on three of the most pressing concerns that the residents of Wisteria Ridge have expressed. One concern focuses on the close proximity of some areas of the development to Wisteria Ridge Terrace. I understand that this development has and does follow current code requirements, but concerns or changes to the code are not being addressed at this meeting. In this development, according to the drawings I have seen, at least one street appears to come within 10 feet of some of the backyards. Another area of the drawing appears to show a parking area in the retail area coming within 10 feet of the residential yards. And I said the parking area, not the, not the buildings. Obviously, this created quite a bit of apprehension for some of the residents in those areas. A second concern involves personal safety. Along the two sides, both the north and the west side, that are adjacent to the development, there are a total of 19 homes. Of these 19 homes, 11 are occupied by single retired adults. Without some additional buffer between the Wisteria, between Wisteria Ridge Terrace and the development, such a narrow space between the properties of the new development and Wisteria Ridge, we feel like could possibly create potential problems for our subdivision. A third concern, which I understand is out of each of our hands, but is a concern, is traffic. There are currently at least five defined subdivisions plus numerous private homes and side streets that flow into Moody Bridge Road. Will the DOT be able to make necessary changes to Moody Bridge before the development is started to cope with not only current but additional traffic created by the development? We had a meeting with Roger Cox of Barge Design Group and Bill Bullock, Assistant City Manager, along with Mark Costle, the City Planner, via phone, to give residents of Wisteria Ridge Terrace a review of the proposed development. It was helpful in addressing some of our concerns. Mr. Cox did relay these thoughts and concerns with the developer, and on the 13th of this month, past 13th, we did receive from ADC a response to these concerns with some possible solutions. However, options were proposed, but nothing definitive has been offered. We just simply respectfully request that city council listen to these concerns by citizens of our community and request developers to provide a workable solution prior to a final vote. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak for the residents of our subdivision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, was your mother a nurse in the hospital?
Absolutely.
Thought so.
I was in the pharmacy, I think.
My name is J.M. Rollinson and I too am a resident of the Wisteria Ridge subdivision. Bill has done a very good job of relating to you the specific concerns that we have about this project. But in my time, I would like to make some observations regarding the whole zoning process through which we are all currently proceeding. First, I would like to reiterate and make clear again that we do not come here in total and abject opposition to this project. We know that LaGrange needs to grow. We want it to. However, we wish it to be wise growth, and we do not want it done at our direct expense or at the expense of our quality of life or personal safety. In the final sentence of the Gettysburg Address, President Lincoln urges us to ensure that this government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from the earth. Now, I'm confident that you are all aware that many, if not most, of the citizens of this country feel that this is an area in which we have lost ground in recent years. Rightly or wrongly, the faith, trust, and confidence that many of us have in our government to protect us is not as great as it used to be. We often feel that our interests are diminished and/or ignored in favor of the rich, the connected, and the powerful. There are even jokes about it. You may have heard the one about what is the biggest lie that is told these days, and the answer is, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help you." The primary function of government at any level is to protect its citizens. This is what the police department does. This is what the fire department does, as well as the various inspectors that the city employs, and they do it well. Similarly, the zoning board and the city council also have that responsibility. Yes, you want to encourage and facilitate growth, but not the kind that is detrimental to all or a significant part of the citizenry. Now, I will admit that I have not done a formal study of the actions of this council regarding zoning issues, and I'm sure that exceptions to the scenario I'm going to lay out certainly exist. However, based on what I have heard, read, and been told by people closely involved in prior hearings such as this, large controversial zoning projects like this over the years have followed a similar pattern. That pattern includes the zoning board approving the request because it meets the code, and then the council holds an open hearing like this, and the various members of the community who oppose or who have concerns are given the opportunity to express their side of the situation. The council listens. Some members express due concern and may even commit to do what they can. But when the vote is taken at a later date, the project is approved. At that point, those who came with those concerns become collateral damage, and they have to live with the consequences, sometimes negative, of that decision. And when this occurs, the punchline in that joke that I told you is strongly reinforced. However, we don't believe that it has to go down that way this time. We believe that all of you want to do the right thing, and we believe that the developer wants to be fair with his neighbors. We further hope that by working together, we can find the path that works for all of us. Today, the residents of Wisteria Ridge appealed to the council to hear our concerns, to take them seriously, and require that they be addressed before approving this project. As Bill said, once the approval is done, the developer will have no incentive to make any changes. We think that our requests are reasonable and that the cost to the developer to implement them are quite modest when compared to the total scope of the project. If you will do that, then in the end, we can all say happily that contrary to the joke that you were from the government and that you did help us. Thank you very much.
It would be hard to improve on what these two gentlemen have just said, but it's factual. Let me give you some of the things that brought it all about. Traffic is going to be a safety issue. There's 835 units that's going to be built, and if you look at one, two cars per, you're looking at 1,600 to 2,000 additional cars coming out of what is practically one exit at this time. Okay? That's a problem. That's only going to make it worse for the people on, who live on Wisteria Ridge and those that live on Moody Bridge. Fortunately, we've only had one death in the last two weeks in front of our subdivision. That's one too many. Secondly, this past Monday, Monday, I had a, not an accident, opportunity to go out and then I came back and I was turning into our subdivision, and I have my traffic signals on and was trying to turn in. There's five or six cars behind me. This one BMW decided it needed to come around and get out. Well, when it did, it saw the car coming because you couldn't see across the hill. And as a result of that, car almost hit me broadside on the left side the way I was turning. Fortunately, it didn't, and I'm much relieved. I've had the cooperation of the State Patrol, the Sheriff's Office, and the city police trying to control speeding vehicles that come across the hill. We've not had very much success doing that. But both the State Patrol, the Sheriff's Office, and Deckmeyer's Office have all been out there, but we can't stop the speeding traffic that's coming across. When I go south on Moody Bridge, if I do the speed limit, which is 35, by the time I get to South Greenwood, I'm going to have from one to seven cars backed up behind me. That's typical of any time of the day, seven days a week. So that, this reinforces that we do have a problem when we go open up an additional 1,600 to 2,000. I know that the city has talked with the state about putting a roundabout, a traffic light where Ann Bailey comes into the property that they proposing the entrance to Moody Bridge. You know, that's good, but will that be installed in time enough to take care of the problems? From a personal point of view, I don't think a traffic light is going to do it for this reason. When it's on green, those people coming south on Moody Bridge, they're going to come across the top of the hill and they're going to continue at a high rate of speed. You will find more people speeding on that road than you do following the speed limit. I'd like to address green space for just a moment. And with green space, I think that Barge Design has allocated a lot of green space plus lakes and ponds to this, this development. Why not let the neighbor show the same respect to a subdivision that's already there and doing a lot for the community? And if we could have additional 20, 30 foot of green space on the north and west side, that might take care of the whole problem. Retail, there is no barrier to keep people from coming from the retail section at the front of their subdivision into our subdivision. The foot traffic, to me, that's a problem, not for them but for us, because you're going to see a lot of people going to those six stores there. One supposedly is going to be a grocery store, one could be a dental office, I don't know what, and a restaurant. So, two of those could have a lot of extra space coming in that could walk straight across or they could have more cars coming in. I asked the other question, retention ponds. Whose responsibility, after Lake Point has developed this property and got it under, sold, and upkeep, who takes care of the maintenance, the insurance, and keeping those ponds up to date? We asked the council to postpone this approval until you can get some farm answers or we can get some farm answers from ADC. Some appropriately, the letter that we received, it was dated the 12th, not the 13th, for notes. And if you'd like to see a copy of it, I'll hack it. But those are our wishes. We appreciate you taking the time to listen to us and thank each one of you. Thank you for more than what you know.
I got a question for you, Mr. Coleman. If you're, the issue about the commercial property being right behind a few of the houses and you're worried about foot traffic coming, turning and coming through the entrance of Wisteria Ridge and then?
Not the entrance. Not the entrance. Coming from the retail store into our subdivision, we have three homes that border that.
Right, yeah. I agree with that. But I was, people walking down the road, there's no sidewalks, is what I'm getting at.
Right.
So, that's what you're conveying, is that people would cut through there to come through the, through the, between the houses to go down the hill to get to the commercial? Is that what you're?
Yes.
You're saying? And what would use 20 feet of extra buffers not really going to remedy that? What's, what are you saying, what are you asking for that would remedy that?
In all probability, we're going to build a fence. Okay? That will help us. It'll particularly help the people up at the front of our subdivision. We've got a fence all the way around the south side. That's a wooden fence that was put in with city code at the time the houses were built. And we're, if, if there's not a larger buffer zone, a green space coming down through there, we're going to be forced into doing that. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, Barge, Mr. Roger Cox, if you could make any comments.
Good afternoon. My name is Roger Cox with Barge Design Solutions. We're a representative of, of the developer here. Roger Cox with Barge Design Solutions, a representative of the developer for the Lake Point at Highland Pines. Put together just a small background presentation for context. Just wanted to share a little bit more about the process and what the developer's gone through up to this point and what the project includes. Couple discussion topics here. I won't bore you with reading them aloud, but we'll, we'll jump right into the development So, just for familiarity, we're looking at the northwest portion of the city of LaGrange. The project site in the photo is outlined in blue there. And the, this includes two parcels for the entire development, but what we are ultimately looking at for the rezoning applications is the area shaded in yellow that you're seeing on the screen there. There are several applications in for the rezoning of that portion of the property. And as, as you've seen in the rezone request, that's for the TNR, the single-family residential, TNMR for the townhomes, and TNMX for the multi, excuse me, multifamily commercial areas. And largely, we see these as fitting the surrounding areas, similar designations, and it's majority residential in size and scope. The, the TNR designation for the residential, single-family homes is more than half of the development. What that looks like graphically, what's shown here, is just a comparison of the rezone designations along with our master plan. So, the master plan shows what generally complies with the city's unified development ordinances and generates the, the counts that Mr. Coleman Cody referenced. And on the right side, those are the three separate designations to make that accommodating for the city. So, the largest thing I wanted to spend time on with you all is to describe the process and what, what has gone into this effort so far. Dating back over a year ago, it began with an idea of purchasing the property and looking at different concept plans and discussing with the city what it's been used for or intended for in the future. After some research there, it was designated as a future residential space, so much as explained by some of the infrastructure that's been put in place by the city to support the development at some point. And then further looking at the, at the property and meeting its intended use, the owner and developer had a market analysis prepared and really identified and, and agreed with the housing need that was heard from the, the general community. So, that really, really just outlines the need for the housing, the different types of products, price points, et cetera. So, they really want to make sure that the product fit, fits the environment. Also, just collaborating with the city, again, mostly on the housing need front with as much that's coming into the city and looking at commute times and things like that as some of the surrounding folks that work here, trying to identify those needs and work through that process. There's been quite a bit of survey information. I don't know that the property's ever been surveyed before, but we went through that effort. Environmental studies for this portion of the development were done so that we could identify creek streams, water bodies, and protect those with both the design and for the community. It's a water source close to West Point Lake, so we want to make sure that we're good stewards of the environment.
Take the mic out of the thing and stick it up to your mouth.
Having trouble getting close.
Yeah. Yeah. Just to get it closer so I can hear you.
Aside from the environmental studies, good, we've done the master planning process, which has gone through several, several iterations that led to this, at this point that we're presenting. And again, at, at that level, what we're showing and presenting it graphically is just to show that it's compliant with development ordinances as well as a fit for the community. We've also had to go through extensive phasing plans to share future ideas of what the rest of the parcel would look like. That's required by regional commission, and later on, you'll see in the development of regional impact, this, this has gone before surrounding communities and cities as well as G.DOT district offices. We've prepared a traffic impact study, which I've left at my, my pew over here, but it's a 334-page document of every different scenario related to the development, every different phase, subsequent improvement recommendations, and when those things are required as part of the development based upon the impacts that are generated from the population here. And again, all of that information, the planning survey and that traffic study has gone before the regional commission, ultimately leading up to where we are now in the rezoning process. So, to address the housing need, there's a clear understanding that there's a lack of housing inventory in the area. There's lengthy commutes, as I mentioned earlier, from people traveling upwards to an hour into the city to where they work here, but can't find a location to, to live. We feel like this development would be a, a good live-work environment. They're looking at providing amenities and, and space that's, that's desirable for the community. It really helps with the job growth and creation initiatives of the city as well as some of the incoming industries that we've recently heard. And ultimately, again, just want to suggest and mention that it does meet intended use of the property, and looking at surrounding zoning designations, it has similar classifications. To get a little bit more in detail with the traffic study, this is just a snippet of, of the graphic that was required of the different locations that G.DOT required us study in great detail. They have a very particular process in how this is done, but ultimately, what it leads to is each red circle you see there, it's probably difficult to read on the map, but we had to look at multiple intersections, not just the entrance or entrances of the community, but even the surrounding intersections and how this might affect the area. So, what it does is it outlines recommendations mentioned before. As Phase 1 opens, that it outlines several things that have to be put in place or recommended for that process. I'll try better. I apologize. So, specific to the first phase of the development, there's traffic calming and intersections improvements that are needed at Moody Bridge and Ann Bailey, and that's what would be considered the primary entrance to the development. The traffic calming aspects of that could be signalization or roundabout or some other measure. It's a G.DOT roadway, so they're ultimately going to dictate a lot of what's done there as well as the intersections improvements. Those, those include dedicated turn lanes, acceleration lanes that really provide for the safety of the folks and the additional traffic on Moody Bridge. Similarly, at North Greenwood and Moody Bridge, this is south of development, same thing there, the traffic calming measures through signalization likely, as well as the dedicated turn lanes, just to improve the overall classification and level of service of that intersection. Looking north from the development, there were intersection improvements identified at Sweet Gum Drive and Moody Bridge Road, and those are specifically dedicated turn So, looking at next steps from here, we just want to explain that process. Again, the purpose of this, at this point, is to outline these areas that we are seeking to be rezoned. Those boundaries have to be identified and presented to you, and to be able to do that, we had to do a certain level of conceptual engineering. So, that's exactly what this is right now, is a concept presented before you that's, that's met with the developer's intent and market analysis. met with the developer's intent and market analysis. So all of that meshes well together. And from here moving forward is to continue to be compliant with the development ordinances, and that includes everything that's there. That's all the streets, the parking requirements, what we've presented in terms of parking exceeds development ordinances right now. The structures themselves, there's quite a bit of new language that I would consider strict development ordinances that are wonderful for the community, but it, it really outlines what this will look like and, and provides you with a better product within the city. The buffer requirements around each designation, at a bare minimum, that is what would be put in place. And I, I had the luxury of speaking with the Wisteria Ridge folks last week and got to hear some of the, the concerns that were shared here with you tonight. And while we talked through that process, I wanted to explain that both from a design perspective and the owner's perspective, they have every intent possible to try to provide that buffer and maximize it where they can. But at the level of design that we're at right now, it's very, very difficult to put a finite number on that without imposing cost implications to one party or the other. And I can give you a wild scenario because partially this answer was my own. If, if we commit to a specific number and have to build a large retaining wall to make that possible, that, that bears the cost to the developer on their own parcel. So there was, with that being a complexity of, of the discussion, it's, it's a best faith effort for us to try to approve that buffer and improve that buffer and provide vegetative screening as best possible. It's in both our interests to preserve trees in the, excuse me, in the area and keep those in place, not cut down large trees, for example. So where we can improve that, that's, that's everyone's intent, as well as providing that green space as an amenity to the, the future tenants of the development. So with that, that's, that's the end of the overview and presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Any questions, Public Council?
Uh, yes. So I understand you're not willing to commit to a wall or whatever buffer would be necessary because of cost-prohibited measures, whatever. But could you at least commit to some sort of unfriendly vegetation that would keep people from walking through it, such as rose, bushes, palmetto, thorny plants, that kind of stuff? Because I think that's what they're really after. They just want to keep people from coming across the properties. Now, you can't commit to a wall, but could you commit to vegetation at least?
There's certainly a lot of leeway and flexibility in landscape plans that have to be provided. The, the development ordinances are pretty clear in what they require there within that buffer. So it's, and, and I apologize, Mark, I might not get this correct, but the, the spacing of trees, the species of trees, the shrubbery, everything that's included within the development ordinance is something that we'd have to address.
Species isn't in the UDO, is it?
Tree species, yes, sir, it is.
But not bushes?
Well, shrubs is referred to in the UDO. For a type A buffer requirement, it's got a minimum width of 10 feet. It's got one tree requirement, I believe it's every 200 square feet, one shrub every, it's either 50 or 100 square feet. That would be for the entire length of that, of the required 10-foot type A buffer. So, yeah, we don't mention shrub or bushes, but we do capture shrubs, and then we've got a tree species list that they've got, they've got to choose from. But to your point, I mean, we've had success for that in my prior career at the police department, planting some of the bushes that you've described to kind of limit or otherwise prohibited pedestrian access within given areas. So I know kind of what avenue you're going down, and that is certainly something we can, you know, we can look at.
I know we will not take a vote on it tonight, but Mark, could you and the staff work with the developers and take their concerns and see if we can work something out that would be admirable for both, both groups?
Yes, sir. You know, I can, I always really know that I need the microphone, but over the past several weeks, we've met, you know, personally with the Wisteria Ridge HOA. I know that I've met with several individuals in the room here individually at City Hall as well as others. I've also fielded, you know, several phone calls. So I think we're, you know, at least I'm in a good position, and I think Barge Design Solutions is in a good position to understand what their concerns are, whether it be traffic-related, buffer-related, at this, at this point landscaping-related, personal safety, and quality of, corresponding quality of life issues. So once again, we'll continue to keep those lines of communication open, and, you know, as issues arise, we'll be glad to find a solution.
And one last question, and this might be for you, it could be for you. Did the DOT say anything about sidewalks?
They have not, not to my knowledge. Now, they're primarily focused at this point on any type of traffic calming measures that may be required, roundabouts, signalization, acceleration lanes, deceleration lanes, center turning lanes. At this point, it's my recollection that there aren't any sidewalks on Moody Bridge Road at all. And they do exist on North Greenwood Street, but, but obviously that's going to be a mile or so to the south. But that is certainly something that they can be engaged about, you know, how that will come to fruition.
There are sidewalks on Moody Bridge.
Where at on Moody Bridge?
Close to the funeral home.
I'm, I'm talking in close proximity to your, to your subdivision. Anywhere past, really, Wal-Mart Road, there's absolutely nothing. The closest one may be there, it's Stripler Handing, but it's probably what, 100 yards in length at best. So, you know, by and large, there's nothing north of there.
But there's tremendous amount of foot traffic. People walking through those apartment complexes, and someone's going to get, you know, hit with a car with that sidewalk.
Right.
I mean, they're walking in the grass, they're walking in the road.
Yeah. You know, they're required, if sidewalks not required or not provided, they're required to walk, to walk as close to the curving as possible, but that's something we can look at.
If we could take this conversation a little later, because we want to make sure we get everything tonight, their concerns taken care of tonight. So as I said before, we're not going to vote on it tonight, but we'll be voting on it a little later on. I would like to have a lot of clarity from the developers as well as the citizens, making sure that we can get everything taken care of. May not be able to hash everything out, but we can get most of their concerns. We have no control over DOT, none at all, so we try to stay out of DOT's hair so we can have a good relationship with them. But we will do that. And so if there's nothing else, we're going to consider that hearing closed tonight.
I got one more question for Mark, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right. Can you back back up, Ms. Sue, to the, to the overall layout?
Okay.
If all these different zoning districts in that parcel, if we approve that as is, does, does that mean they could come and switch from the commercial, you could actually exchange that with like the apartments? Could that all be reversed? I mean, is this, I guess what I'm saying is...
Technically, it could be. However, obviously, what is going to be tied to the rezoning is what the developer is submitting as you see here. That's their, their master plan. So in order for them to do that, or if they would, if they would be so inclined to do that, I think that there would be some, some significant challenges.
He would have to come back before us. Lord of the mic.
That's my recollection. I would defer to our city attorney on that, but tying the master plan in with the legislation...
Not as currently constituted, that will not be required, that exact plan.
Okay. So while technically then, I guess they could swap them, I don't think that that's in anybody's best interest to do that. I think they were very intentional with where they put their, their multifamily, their single-family, to include their active adult units, their patio homes and their estate homes, et cetera. I just don't see that coming to fruition.
And the question about the responsibility of the ponds, I imagine it's on the developer of that property?
Yes, it is. And, you know, Roger, if you want to, I know we had a sidebar earlier today specifically about the, the maintenance of the detention ponds that will be located in within the Phase One boundary.
Yep, sure.
Sorry.
I'll be brief. Specific to the detention pond question, operation and maintenance requirements would be required by the city for us to turn the plans in for civil design plans, and then that would fall on the developer, later be transferred to the HOAs, much like other communities have. So no, no obligation of adjacent communities or the city.
All right. And there was one, one last question. I promise this will be it. And this was for Barge. He's, he's sitting over there, hadn't said anything, so I forgot.
He's a Barge student.
Or you're a Barge student. At our first meeting, when y'all first brought this to us, I asked y'all, y'all advised, y'all were going to run this over to the Yellow Jack Creek Pump Station with the sewage.
Yes, sir.
Have you, y'all were supposed to get back with me, I had a question about, is this going to, what kind of stress is this going to have on that second station? Because you've got residents over there that if this causes a lot more smell, it could affect houses in that subdivision. So is that something that y'all thought up on, or did y'all...
Understood. In, in the planning stages, that's, that's the way that it was intended to go, and the infrastructure's built out for us to send it that way, and the city basically had it planned to go that direction. On the design side of things, we understand we have to commit in our next step in detailed design to have those conversations with the city in terms of how that lift station's improved or upgraded for this additional flow. So it would be part of that conversation. We have not done that for clarity at, at this point.
Okay, thank you.
No comments, we consider that hearing closed. Thank you all so very much for coming, and we really appreciate the spirit that y'all came in. Thank you so very much.
We're still in the meeting.
You worked at Cory's son, too, didn't you?
I don't know about Cory, if that's...
I think you worked at personal.
All right. Now, we're here tonight also to receive comments on Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals' recommendation to rezone property located on Lukin Industrial Drive from GP-GI Campus Industrial, General Industrial, our agribusiness to CRMX corridor mixed use. Any comments on that? Anyone here to make comments? Seeing none, I consider that...
Question. What is this parcel again?
It's been a couple weeks since we met. Would you like Mr. Postle to come up and give a brief reminder of this one and probably the next one?
This property is located on the Lukin Industrial Drive extension between Hamilton Road and South Davis Road in the vicinity of Clearview Elementary School. The parent tract is approximately 80 acres. They're going to be carving roughly 20 acres out of that 80 to be rezoned to corridor mixed use.
So, next question. I hate to hit y'all with this. Why aren't we calling that East Lukin Industrial? Because that's what the sign says.
Um, I don't have an answer for that. I guess arguably, it, it probably should be referred to as East Lukin Industrial, but geographically, that's where it's located.
All right, all right.
Yeah. As it relates...
I mean, that's why, that's why I was asking, where is this located, because...
And then the, the next public hearing is...
Comments on that one?
Okay.
Any comments on that one? On B? All right, let's go to C. To receive comments on Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals' recommendation to rezone 2457 Weisfeld Road from AC-MX Activities Center Mixed Use to AC-MX Activities Center Mixed Use.
Yes, sir. This is a property located on Weisfeld Road there at exit 13. It used to be the former BP Service Station located directly beside Arby's. It's currently zoned as Activity Center Mixed Use. However, there's a conditional agreement attached to the, to the property. If it's rezoned to Activity Center Mixed Use, then the development agreement is no longer in place. That development agreement is probably circa 2012, 2014. You know, in a nutshell, we've got sufficient safeguards in place in the Unified Development Ordinance. We believe that there's really no longer a need for that development agreement. But once again, geographically, that's where it's located.
Yeah, comments on that? Seeing none, we consider that closed. Now, we're going to our petition for good communication with Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals' recommendation on a request to rezone property located at 510 Springdale Drive from suburban, single-family residential to traditional neighborhood residential.
Yes. On Monday, our Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals unanimously recommended that a plus or minus one acre parcel located at 510 Springdale Drive be rezoned from suburban, single-family residential to traditional neighborhood residential for the purpose of no more than five single-family homes to be built on the property. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on October the 11th.
Call for public hearing, second.
As a motion for public second, we'll call for a public hearing, all in favor, aye. Opposed by the same side, aye, so care.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much, Mr. Mark. No, any, any council members report?
Yes, I have a report. I would now realize that the important's of having these work sessions so we don't have so many questions in the council meeting.
Well, I'm glad you learned something. Okay. Now, we have our city manager report.
Yes, sir. Tonight, just our financial statements for August, as well as the payment and bills over $2,000. I don't have any particular comments at this time, it's early in our budget year. We are tracking very closely, though, on the revenue expense side. Glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for our city manager? Seeing none? All right, we'll go to our resolutions. Authorizing the mayor and clerk to reenter into a intergovernmental agreement with two counties regarding the 800 MHZ Up Bray Coast and Peter Site.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Lieutenant, the last council meeting, you authorized us to be forward with the purchase of a new radio system. At that time, the intergovernmental agreement was not prepared and ready for your vote. So the county's actually already approved this document, so staff have recommended your approval. As you'll recall, this is the county paying 50%, the city paying 50% of the new radios.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
As a motion for proper second to approve, all in favor, aye. Opposed by the same side, aye, so care. Thank you so very much. First reading of ordinances, rezoning property on Moody Bridge Road.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city, excuse me, so as to reclassify the use of real estate located adjacent to Mini Bridge Road known by Oxford Charter Holdings, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Rezoning property on Lukin Industrial Drive.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use of real estate located adjacent to Lukin Industrial Drive and owned by Walter Scott Davis III and Dudley Lumber Company, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Rezoning property located at 2457 Weisfeld Road.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange to amend the code, to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use of real estate located adjacent to Weisfeld Road known by William Hanley Jr. and Susan Walker, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
All right, second reading of ordinances, restricting parking on a portion of Vernon Road.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange to amend Section 10-20-96 of the code so as to approve it parking on a portion of Vernon Road, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve, second.
As a motion for proper second, all in favor, let me know by saying aye. Opposed by the same side, aye.
Got a question.
Yeah, question, yeah.
What did we decide we were going to do on the parking? Were we, did we...
We decided that we would allow the additional parking, not...
We allow the additional parking?
Yes.
Okay.
The second option, it wasn't the first option, it was the second option, where we provided a little more parking.
We had, we actually had two things before us. I thought we had, oh, kind of settled on this number two. That's what I thought, too.
That's what you read in the first reading, and now it's...
Yeah, I'm just making sure. Okay. All right, go ahead.
All in favor, aye. Opposed by the same side, so care. Now, we have, I guess, good news.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Lieutenant. The good news for tonight, we want to share a couple pictures.
a couple pictures with you. Our city manager, Ms. Kelsey, spent today talking to several garden and middle school classes about our local government today. We're very excited about not only having a platform to educate our middle school students about how the city of La Grange works and our government, but also the opportunity to continue this partnership and help create a long-term educational program focusing on local government. So, we're very excited about getting even younger. And then also, we want to remind everybody that La Grange 101 applications are due this Friday at 5:00 PM. We have applications on the website, and I have some hard copies if y'all know anybody. But they're due tomorrow at 5:00.
Thank you so much. Anything else before us? If not, this is your...